At six o'clock, at this time I'll call for the regular meeting of Perry City Council Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, for we have a form. Item three is invitation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you're able, please rise. And I'd call on councilman Reverend Willie King with faith to Bible fellowship for the invitation.
Father God, we thank you so much to live in the city so that we be able to enjoy the quality of life. I pray and thank you for our administration and thank you for council, Lord. And actually, you've blessed us now as we move forward in the state of business. And we thank you and we praise you, and Jesus, thank you, Father.
Item two, I'd call on councilman Robert Jones for the leadings of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord who has saved us from our nation under God, in his wisdom, with his just law.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item four is a professional services appointment. For A is an appointment of an associate judge to the municipal court. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we have a request from Chief Judge Freeman of the municipal court that you appoint Ms. Ashley Denwiler Newman as an associate judge. With the increasing low with the court, it is the judge's feeling and the administration agrees that we need to have a designated associate judge to recommend you proceed for it.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions to Mr. Gilmore's staff concerning this item? Hearing none, all, at this time I want to entertain a motion that we appoint the associate judge to the municipal court as described. So, motion and a second in the discussion. Hearing none, all, if you have a favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item five, a recognition's presentations. By A is a presentation of American counsel from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. Kelly?
Yes, sir. You've got Eric Osborne from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. I think he's got a few words and he's got some places he's going to hand out, and I got to agree with him.
Very good.
Yeah, I'm Eric Osborne with several hats on today. I'm representing the Georgia Association of Water Professionals and the Georgia section of the American Water Works Association. And the city of Perry, as you can see, has racked up some hardware this year. And I'm here to officially present some of these to them in front of you also, that you know what a great water and wastewater system you have and great personnel you have working here, something to be very proud of. The first thing I'd like to present is something that they get to have bragging rights for for a whole year, and they won the best tasting tap water in all of District Five, which composes of, I don't know, probably about 10 counties in this local area. They actually came to Columbus and competed, and we had two different panels of judges, one in the morning, and they won the morning competition and went on to the finals. And they did not win the state recognition, but they did win District Five, so that's a big honor to have for a whole year. So I'd like to give this to Sharon. Travis? So that's a great honor. The next thing is they also achieved perfect compliance in water and wastewater for the year 2018, and they got the gold award for that. The next step for them will be after they pass five years, it'll be a platinum award. And it's nice to rack these up on the wall, too, because staying in perfect compliance in both water and wastewater is not easy to do. And if you looked at the list of people that weren't in compliance, you'd realize that. So I'll give this to Cory. And while Cory's standing up here, Cory also received for District Five the top wastewater operator of the year, which is a huge honor. Of all the wastewater operators in this whole district, he was voted by his peers as the number one operator in this district. Congratulations. And while Sharon's close by, she got the top stormwater operator of the year, which is the same thing, all of District Five, she got voted by her peers as the best stormwater operator. Now we have a couple of larger ones. They also received this year, and I'm not, because I'll be up here for a while, they also received the best water reclamation facility in the category of 1.1 to 10 million gallons a day. So everybody in the whole state of Georgia that's in that size category, they won after going through a rigorous inspection. They were selected by points and percentages to be the number one plant of the year. That's not in the district, that's statewide. And the other thing they also received in the category, and this is for the groundwater serving 3 to 8.99 million gallons a day, best operating water plant of the year. So your water and your wastewater plants were scored the highest of anybody in the state in that category. So Travis? It's my pleasure, when you hear the city of Perry now, everybody recognizes this is a place of quality and excellence, and I appreciate the hard work that these guys do. They're all very active in our associations, too, which is a very important aspect. They all are inspectors and do things to inspect other places around the state, which makes the whole state better. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Right back, just a minute. I think Mr. Gilmore has told you all we've made some changes in personnel recently, so I brought those gentlemen with me here tonight. Travis Garcia is going to be taking Ryan Bowe's position. Okay, Ryan's going to be sitting over here, still be here. Mr. Chip Anderson from Water Robbins, Georgia, will be taking assistance project manager. I'm going to give their names and numbers to everybody. Our focus is to pay more attention to customer service. You know, workforce has went up, we slighted off, we've got to bring that back to our attention. And so we've made some personnel changes, relate that. If y'all have any problem, you got my number, please go. Okay? Thank you all very much, I appreciate you.
Sharon, can I get y'all to go up there so I can take a picture? Yes.
While y'all are coming up, I'd like to commend you and Mr. Osborne, thank you for still here for taking time to come represent your organization, to make this presentation. If it doesn't go unnoticed.
I appreciate y'all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. We love y'all too.
Thank you.
Well, I'll have to hold something here.
Everybody.
Congratulations.
We got it. Okay, that's a positive talking. I'll tell you where you're from. They quit.
A couple more Robbins, been at DSC for seven years, got a maintenance background. And I appreciate your contribution and work hard.
Glad to have you with us. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, a question if I may before you resume, would you join me and council from the dice, please?
Sure.
Mr. Gilmore, you want to join us?
Mayor Fairclough, I would like to speak when we have to this council. We would like to thank you for your nine and a half years of outstanding leadership and the things that you have done over those nine and a half years to move Perry forward. We're really proud of the city we have, and your leadership has significant impact on us being where we are today. And I just can't thank you enough for your service and your friendship over the years and helping me do my job well, too. So thank you very much, and we will really miss you. And this is our last meeting, and we just wanted to say, you know, give you a warm send-off and thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Please.
Well, I was going to give one at the end, but I can do it now.
Well, you want to, I'd like to give the council members a chance to speak to you, that you can speak to it.
Absolutely.
Have the last word.
Thank you. Let me extend our hand. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your leadership and vision for the city over the past nine and a half years. Your vision has led to the creation of a lot of programs and initiatives that will continue to move forward long after you have left us. I look very forward to working together with this council to continue your legacy and to continue making Perry that much greater of a place to live. I thank you and I appreciate you and I appreciate you.
I have enjoyed working with you for the last nine and a half years. Starting off kind of well, because you couldn't take care of yourself, every time you looked up, you fell down. You were thinking about bubble wrapping it.
That's right.
But you've done excellent job for the city of Perry. I think it's a bad time to leave, but if you must go, you must go. I've enjoyed your friendship also.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to say that I'm grateful and thankful for you being here and happy here today. I have learned a lot being a councilman, and I thank you for your attitude and the way that you carry yourself in and about in our community. And we appreciate how you handle yourself and that to hand. And so we thank you and we wish you all the success and thank you for being here in the city to move the city forward. We appreciate you and thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, it was 10, 12 years ago. Never dreamed we'd be here or had served in the basket we have for the last almost 10 years. For those of you who don't know, Jimmy and I live near each other, and he and the former fire chief and I used to walk every morning together and never even talked about running for office. It's been a good ride, good working with you. Good mission.
Mayor, we wish you well, and you knew it better, we wish you well.
Thank you, Fairclough. Wow.
Oh, dearest.
You know, it's one thing to volunteer to do work, it's another thing to get paid for, and it's an entirely different thing to get elected to do it. If you've never been there, it's kind of hard to explain that feeling. But I can tell you this, I have thoroughly enjoyed most of the time that I have served the citizens of Perry, and I have thoroughly enjoyed working with these fine women and men that you see standing before you and also the staff that you see seated before you. Most of you have heard me say these words, and I'll say them one more time. Our job is to set vision, is to answer the tough questions, set policy, hire the right people for the positions on staff, and then get out of the way and let them do their job. They deserve as much credit because they are the ones that actually carry forward the initiatives that this body puts forward. They bring us the suggestions, we don't always take them all, but we do listen every single time they have something to say. We listen to the public every time they have something to say. I think that's critical. Communication is one of the keys to success. The communication that this body has, standing beside me, is second to none. Their friendships are there, but that is a side note, not to the meaning of the little thing. But our working relationship is second to none. That is critical, and that's one, if not the main reason, that this city is so successful is a combination of things. It's not me, it's not any one individual, it's a collective and group effort that extends beyond this body, it extends beyond the staff, it extends beyond the employees who also carry the load directly into the community on a daily basis, every single day of the year, day in and day out, month in and month out, year in and year out. Because the communication from our constituents continues to happen, we make adjustments, and those adjustments are positive and responsive and fun, a lot of fun. There have been some changes in city Perry over the last nine and a half years. It thrills me to know, man, to be a part of that. It does sadden me for me to decide to leave at this time, but it is selfishly the right thing for me to do. And I appreciate your thoughts, your kind words, and your understanding, and I will miss it. I'll miss each and every one of you, and I'll miss the staff. I will. I won't miss the like-not phone calls. My grandmother used to say, if anybody calls after nine o'clock at night, it's never good news. And that's usually true from that standpoint. But you can still handle it because at that point in time, and this is a key element, the situation is already under control, it's just relating information. These men and women don't need help doing their job, that's why we hired them. They communicate and they make sure that everybody knows what's happening. I told these men and women when I first took office that one of the most important things that's going to happen, and they didn't believe me then, but I think they do now, is that they would always be informed. And I've tried during this entire time to make certain that they are, and that's important. They have every bit of information that I give, barring with very few exceptions, in order to make an informed city. Any one of these men and women can tell you anything about the city of Perry that I can, and I think that's critical. That's one of the best ways, in my opinion, to be successful, any organization, but specifically the city of Perry. All I have to say now is thank you to each one of you for the dedication, for the service, for the commitment, for the integrity, and for your friendship and for caring enough to continue doing this job. It's not easy. If you ever want to know what it's like to live in a glass house, get elected to something. You'll find out. It is my honor and has been to serve the citizens of Perry, this council, the staff and employees for the city of Perry. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mayor, can, I'm sorry. The plaque reads, "Presented to Mayor Jimmy Fairclough for Outstanding Leadership as Mayor of Perry, May of 2019." So thanks again, and I wanted everybody to know this was something. Thank you for your words.
Thank you. Thank you. Now you'll say your name. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Now you'll say your name. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Now you'll say your name. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1155.12]
It includes the signature of each one of our pilots. So we were unable to present prior. But I think the best words, if I can just read the card to all the city council. To Perry City Council, thank you for the city's support of the Chambers Annual Dogwood Festival and Hot Air Balloon Fest. We are blessed to have your partnership on this and other platforms of our work in our community. Respectfully, Garland, Lindman, and President CEO of Perry Chamber. So I'm gonna let them talk about what they have, and to conserve time, we'll come up and we'll stage our presentations and let Alan grab photos.
Mayor, Council, thank you for hearing us out. Just wanted to extend a thank you from the Perry County Chamber of Commerce and our Education Committee for your support of our Perry Youth Leadership Program. We just graduated 25 students. Deborah is a co-leader, Dan Perdue is a co-leader, and I'm a co-leader in that group. 25 students from Veterans High School, Perry High School, and Westfield High School. And Deborah documented the year. And you will see in there, there's the City Government Day, which the kids loved. They had an election for mayor. We had a couple of people that won the run for mayor, and that's unusual. Usually you ask kids, who wants to be mayor? And they all duck their head. We had two of them that said, I want to be mayor, and we had a little election in the back room, which was kinda cool. So these kids were very engaged, and we thank you for your support of that. And so what we'd like to do is present you with our yearbook that we have, and thank you for all the support you do and all the... that you do for education and you help us out. So we'd like to present you with our yearbook.
And if I may add, I want to, again, the Perry Chamber, we're very strong. We've got some really great platforms of work, and I'm not bragging on myself, I'm bragging on the membership organization and leadership. But again, with our youth leadership program, Scott, Deborah, and Dan Perdue are co-chairs of that. This year, we went back and our graduating PYL students from two years ago, the prior class, we presented them red and gold honor cords. And that will be another tradition of ours that they'll take forward. And I will tell you that all the schools were so appreciative of that, and that's just another mark of their heritage here in Perry. So I want to thank them in front of you, but I also want you to know that, again, the Chamber is striving to make sure that all of our platforms are reaching higher and higher levels of excellence in your community.
Thank you all very much for what y'all do. Good night. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank y'all very much. Very good. Good job. Are there any other community departments who wish to get the seating update at this time?
Thank you. Item seven, is citizens within? Citizens who wish to address council at this time? Yes, please stand your name.
My name's Tim Holloway. I live at 901 Washington Street. I'm Robert. Very much. I want to bring up something that would probably fall into the heading of a complaint. Some of the logging trucks in Tulsa Lumber like to cut through Gilmer and make a left turn onto Washington, and they've been cutting across the corner of our yard. I don't know that they're all from Tulsa Lumber, but I have personally witnessed that several that are from the lumber company. And yesterday when I went out to cut the grass, we hit, oh, let me back up. We installed, we put a big landscape rock on the corner. It's on the easement between the sidewalk and the street to kinda stop that, cut across the yard stuff. But it worked for a while, but then when I went out to cut the grass yesterday, I saw the rock had been physically pushed back and broken. Grass all torn up, big ruts going across the corner again. I took lots of pictures. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to print any of them out for you to look at, but...
I've got someone on my phone though.
Just wanted to know if there is not already a city ordinance that would prohibit commercial traffic coming through there? And if not, would you consider instituting ordinance? We did call the police. Police came out and took the information and said we're gonna make an informational report. And my wife went and talked, well, tried to talk to the folks at Tulsa, she went into the office and there was nobody there anywhere. She did, you signed in, right? Left your name and number. Just trying to find a solution. I mean, we live in the historic district, we've done a lot of work in the yard, looks really nice. So, you know, we'd like for the traffic not to be tearing it up.
Thank you, sir. I can appreciate your concern, Mr. Gilmore. Can you address this situation?
We will, but the trucks are prohibited from being on those streets. It's not a designated truck.
But they come all the time.
There's no signs.
There's no sign.
That I've seen, so I don't know if a sign would help, but...
Police officer?
Yeah.
Here, Captain.
Well, one of the things I'm considering doing is installing a security camera, so trying to capture...
I have stopped several of the trucks, because I hear them coming, and I run out to the porch and tell them, you can't come through here, and they'll back down. But that's not...
Yeah, we don't, can't catch them all.
Thank you. Who's up to the druthers?
Thank you.
Ma'am, may I please have your name?
Please, hold on.
Anyone else like to address council? Thank you. Item eight is the review of minutes. Item eight, they counsel for your consideration. You have been provided the minutes in the May 6th, 2019 work session, the May 7th, 2019 pre-council meeting, and the May 7th, 2019 council meeting. Please note that Councilmember William Jackson is absent from the May 6th, 2019 work session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented.
One more second.
That's a motion and a second. Are there any additions, deletions, changes or discussion regarding these minutes at this time?
I accuse myself of...
Thank you. Hearing no other, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Please let the record indicate that Mr. Jackson accuses himself of the May 6th work session vote. The motion passes. Thank you. Item nine is old business. Item nine A, or ordinance is for a second reading and adoption. Item nine A1 is a second reading of an ordinance to control shareable dock and dockless mobility devices, also known as e-scootage. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is, as you said, the second reading of an ordinance that will, first of all, define what shareable dockless devices are, dockless mobility devices and shareable docked mobility devices. It also prohibits them in the city of Perry, because there have been issues in other communities with safety, particularly with the dockless facilities, but this will also provide an opportunity for any company that wants to, that may want to move forward to work with us, to come up with appropriate regulations and test those out before we make a final decision on it. So at this time, we'll prohibit them until such time as we commit more decisions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. At this time, is there anyone in the public who wishes to have a comment regarding this ordinance as described? Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions to Mr. Wood regarding this ordinance? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt this ordinance to control shareable dock and dockless mobility devices as described. If there's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Newby, is that close enough? We had to change the way we do ordinance voting, so thank you. Item nine A2 is the second reading of an ordinance re-zoning property from R-3 multifamily residential district to OC office commercial district. The property is located at 900 Ball Street, tax map number 0P0040035,000. Mr. Wood.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This application, as you mentioned, is to re-zone property. It's located at the corner of Ball Street and Gilmer Street. It's 0.3 acres of land. It has a house on it right now that is about a little less than 1,200 square feet. The, that area of Ball Street has been a transition in the past, and a number of properties have previously been changed from residential classification to commercial. Planning Commission and the staff both recommend approval of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. At this time, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment regarding this ordinance as described?
What kind of commercial activities would be conducted there?
The, the request is for an office commercial district, so it's gonna be primarily office uses or low-impact commercial uses. The applicant in this case is requesting that it be an office and native space and potentially go back to residential.
They're probably gonna put in a parking lot, right?
There may need to be a parking lot, yes. But it would be, it would be limited because of the size of the house.
Sure. Any other comments? The public? Yes?
I speak, and Mayor, and I am the applicant for it.
Please stand your name.
So if you have any further questions? Angela Hudy. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other comments from the public?
I guess my only other comment would be, if you don't mind, Mayor, is that it would only be a short term, maybe a year's or maybe a year or two at the most. We're really just using it as an office space until the renovation of the new Perry Hotel is complete.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm on the property, butts the back.
Oh, okay.
Backyards come together.
Nice to meet you.
Any other comments? Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this second reading of the ordinance as described? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this second reading of the ordinance re-zoning property from R-3 to OC at 900 Ball Street as described. So a motion and a second. Mr. Wood? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Item nine A3 is the second reading of an ordinance re-zoning property from R-1, single-family residential district to GU government use district. The property is located at 1020 Country Club Road, tax map number 0P0410015,000. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this is the property, the 61-plus acres that the city purchased from the former Cherokee Pines Golf Course, that you intend to use as a passive park. The property is currently set on R-1, single-family residential. It's certainly not gonna be used that way. There's also some limitations on sewer capacity in that area that also makes it unusable. The GU classification is government use classification that applies to most all other city-owned properties, and the Planning Commission and the staff both recommend an approval of that classification for this property.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment regarding this second reading of the ordinance re-zoning from R-1 to GU at 1020 Country Club Road as described? Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this particular item at this time? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance re-zoning property from R-1 to GU at 1020 Country Club Road as described.
One more second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10 is any other old business. Item 10A, any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Item 10B is any other old business from council members? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. 10?
Yes.
Item 10C is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 10D is any other old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 10E is any other old business from the city attorney, Ms. Ewing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 11 is new business. Item 11A are matters that have been referred from the May 20th, 2019 work session held yesterday evening, and the May 21st, 2019 pre-council meeting that we had earlier this evening. We're from an item that is not on the agenda. We are being asked to enter, to authorize the city to enter into an agreement between Red Lagoon LLC and the city of Perry. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as we talked about in pre-council, there is a parcel land located near the intersection of Langston Road and Houston Lake Road that currently is used for a regional stormwater detention pond, and we'd like to have council authorization to proceed with the purchase of that parcel. We currently have an easement, might be better off to have it purchased in the seller's agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Gilmore, regarding this item? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we authorize the city to enter into an agreement between Red Lagoon LLC and the city of Perry as described.
One more second.
Thank you. So motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Mr. Johnson, did you raise your hand at that?
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11A1 is a resolution establishing criteria for classifying city streets. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as you, as we discussed last night in the pre-council, in the workshop, the city is asking you to approve a resolution addressing how we would look at city streets in the future, how arterial streets would be designated, and those would be all state routes and any city street connecting those state routes. Minor, excuse me, major collector streets would be any street having 1,000 average daily trip or more, and minor streets would be any city street with an average daily trip of 300 to 999, and then local streets would be all other streets. We're also recommending that on those designated streets, the arterials, major and minor collectors, that any sidewalks that are repaired, upgraded, or constructed would be built according to the city's design of concrete with brick banding within the right-of-way. The striping would be according to federal guidelines. There would be no speed bumps on these streets. They would have speed limits established by the police department, and we would look at how to regularly monitor for speed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the resolution establishing criteria for classifying city streets as described. Is there a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11B is the award, 11B1 is a bid for light towers. Mr. Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the mayor, Council. Tonight, we're asking you to award a bid for solicitation number 2019-24, which is the purchase of four portable light towers. As part of this solicitation, we are directly contacted by 11 vendors. We received nine bids ranging from $28,780 to $47,600. It is staff's recommendation that we would award this bid to Evergreen Specialty Services, which was the low bidder for $28,780. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, Council? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we award this bid to the low bidder of Evergreen Specialty Services in the amount of $28,780 as described.
One more second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 11C, we're being asked to approve the 2019 CHIP grant agreement. Mr. Wood?
Yes, Mayor, this is the agreement with the city and the Department of Community Affairs for the $300,000 CHIP grant or Community Home Improvement Program grant that we received. And we've already approved a grant specialist of Georgia to administer that grant, so we just need you to approve the actual receipt. As I mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the 2019 CHIP grant agreement as described.
One more second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11D, our special event applications, 11D1, the city of Perry is hosting Perry Water Battle. Ms. Turpin?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On Saturday, June 29th, from noon to 1:00 p.m., following the Independence Day Parade hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, the city of Perry will once again be hosting a Perry Water Battle, which invites the young and the young at heart to come out and participate in an all-out water battle, complete with dueling, fire trucks, slip and slides, water balloons, squirt guns, podlars, swimming pools, and numerous other ways to have fun in the water. And we will wrap up the event with a free lunch for the first 200 participants, and what we are asking for today is for approval of the event to be hosted on public property at Rosier Park, as well as for personnel and equipment support from fire and emergency services, the police department, and major services.
Thank you, Ms. Turpin. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this particular event? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the application for the city of Perry hosting the Perry Water Battle at Rosier Park as described.
One more second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 11D2, the city of Perry is hosting Perry Presents. Ms. Turpin?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, the city of Perry will be hosting a new summer series of free lawn concerts at Heritage Park in the city of Perry for community and visitors to enjoy an evening in Perry as they kick off their weekend. Each event in this series will feature one band playing from approximately 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and the events will be held on Friday, June 20th, Friday, July 26th, and Friday, August 23rd. And what we are asking for is approval for the event to be hosted on public property at Heritage Park, and with permission for the public to bring coolers to the event, as well as police to provide personnel staff for event security.
Thank you, Ms. Turpin. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the application for the city of Perry hosting Perry Presents for the summer series of lawn concerts at various dates as described.
One more second.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I think...
And a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes?
I think the date is wrong. I think Friday is the 21st, June 21st. It's the June 20th.
Very well, maybe.
Yeah, June 20th, or 30th, I think.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
That is true.
Okay, thank you. And that is, we don't want to do a Friday night concert on a Thursday night, so that would not be... Okay, so Friday, June 21st. Thank you very much.
No other discussion? Would the person who made the motion be amenable to changing one of these dates from the 20th to the 21st?
Yes.
And the person who made the second, same question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Council understands the change in the motion. Since there's no more discussion, all those in favor of the amended motion, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12, the council member I have, Mr. Johnson?
Well, I, Mayor, would like to point out, given your involvement in Perry Music Festival, and I think it's very fitting that the last act that you preside over as mayor will be to continue in that spirit of reform on certain heritage parks. So if there was a sign that you believe your legacy will continue, I offer that.
I want to...
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Newby?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 13, the Department Head and Staff Items, we start with our clerk, Scott, the head of the force.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Department of Community Development. Mr. Wood?
I think Worthington, yes, sir.
Thank you. From the Economic Development Department, Spardon?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Just a reminder that tomorrow, our Downtown Development Authority is hosting our world zone luncheon lawn at 11:30 at the Perry Art Center until 1:00. We have staff from DCA presenting the tax credit and revolving loan program, and we have over 40 people coming that represent tax professionals, downtown property owners, lots of prospects, about five that are coming, and future tenants and developers as well. So we're excited about those that have RSVP, and we do still have a few more spots open. I know that some of you all will be there, so we're looking forward to tomorrow. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. From the Police Department, Major Phillips. Fire Emergency Services Chief Parker.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Our media specialist, Ms. Palmer.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Turpin, would you aim further?
Yes, sir, actually. Mayor and Council, despite the heat, last Saturday, we did have a successful first Soapbox Derby and May Day Festival here in the city of Perry. It was really, really hot, and apparently it gets hotter than that here, I've been told, so I'm really looking forward to some... But I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, to Councilwoman Diane Grace for coming out and volunteering her time to participate in the art festival. And she did serve as our model for the high school throwdown, and this is the portrait that she selected from the students that did her self-portrait, but there were numerous other fascinating works that these students put out. So although they're not here tonight, I did also want to thank the Perry High School Arts Department for participating. They were a vital part of our event, as well as the entire Houston County school system for sending their art students to come in and really demonstrate their work. I think it was great to have professional artists there, but also people were really inspired by seeing the students do their work. So thank you again for your time and for your participation. We're gonna frame this and put it in City Hall for everyone to look at. And for next year, if any of the other councilmen or mayor would like to come and be our model, I'm sure we'll be looking for someone, so keep that in mind.
How can we possibly top that?
You try. You have to find a very nice hat. We have some great hats, so, yes. Thank you.
From the main street?
I'm sorry? I can't follow that.
Yes, sir. Nothing tonight.
Mr. Worthington, aim further. That is correct. Item 14, the general public items. Does any member of the general public wish to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Becky Wood. I live at 426 Sanderoe Road, and I have some information to give to you, and I'm gonna address it, but I don't know if you have it in front of you. Yeah, no, it's highlighted, it's a very... First, let me call your attention to where I paper clipped the page. Well, actually, what this is, is this is a packet that was presented to the county for the rezoning and annexation of property at the corner of Danny Carpenter and Sanderoe Road. And in that package is the information from the student, and I have highlighted and paper clipped the page that I'm gonna address. And in the yellow, it talks about all vehicular access shall be from Danny Carpenter Drive to limit adverse vehicular impact on houses across... to limit adverse vehicular impact on houses upon Sandifer. Then it talks about a buffer and so forth. Well, guess what? There is, they are, the developer is building an access onto Sandifer Road. Now, this, this information came from the city of Perry. It was in the packet presented to the county. Okay, the county at first objected to the zoning because of the density, the commercial aspect, and so forth. So, our concern is that if the city has presented this, that there's not going to be any access that presented it to the county, there's not going to be any access onto Sandifer Road from that subdivision, then why is the developer building an access to Sandifer Road from that subdivision? And on the next page, I will bring, there is an error that I need to bring to your attention because in that packet, it says, "The city ran a sanitary sewer main line in this area to service Mossy Creek Middle School, but also in anticipation that other properties in the area would annex for sewer service." And I beg to differ with that because we have documentation that that particular sewer line was built for one reason. I'm sorry, my paper's out of order here. In February 25th, 2003, there is a letter from the city of Perry, and I will read just the paragraph, just the paragraph. On February 24th, 2003, the city of Perry approved an agreement to provide sewer services for the development of Wooden Eagle LLC located at the southwestern quadrant of the intersection of Lake Torre Road and Sandifer Road. The agreement assumes the parcel will be phased for R2 and R3 development according to Houston County Board of Commissioners standards. Additionally, the city will contact the Houston County Board of Commissioners for provision of community water. Okay, it went to the Houston County, then a request went to Houston County. I have a minutes from the Houston County meeting on October 7th, 2003, that was to rezone our, rezone, I'm sorry, to, for the city to annex as R3 and R2 that zoning, and with a stipulation that the sewer be in place prior to issuing building permits. Okay, that was approved based on those stipulations. Now, I've got a little history here, there's a reason why we're so concerned about the corner of Danny Carpenter and Sandifer. I'd like to read to you. And it says, "In August and October 2003, the county approved an annexation and rezoning request to county standards and the condition that the sewer be in place prior to issuing building permits." The city did not adhere to the sewer requirement and started issuing building and allowed the builder to build houses. The builder started to pump and haul sewage against Georgia law. When the county discovered this was happening in approximately 2005, then Chairman Sanders reminded the city, and the city said that they would not issue certificates of identity until the sewer was in place and stopped the pumping haul. And we appreciate that. Some months later, the city discovers that the county lot sizes for R2 and R3 are not the same as R2 and R3 for the city. The city then requests annexation and rezoning to HUD of the remaining portion of the subdivision that had not been previously annexed, and a change to the already annexed section to HUD, even though homes were already built and occupied on some of those lots. The county objected to the vote HUD zoning, however, the city approved it anyway. This was in November 2006. In 2009, the developer asked the city to accept the donation of approximately nine acres between Wooden Eagle and Gates of Sandifer as green space. The city accepts. We applaud. Then it was discovered that the nine acres was not in the city. It was still in the county. The city then requested and received controls by the county to annex the city, annex that portion since it was to be used as green space. We applaud it. Next, the developer comes back to the city with his donation request and the condition that the city delete the requirement for one of the playgrounds in order to build houses on the playground site. Residents of Wooden Eagle and Sandifer Road, residents voiced their objection to the deletion of the playground. City did not agree with the deletion of the playground either, and at this time, we still do not know the status of that area. It should be noted that after this rezoning disparity was discovered, the three cities and counties have had any different lot size requirements, that the then Vision 2020 group asked that the cities and counties planning folks get together and come up with a compromise that would have all lot sizes in the cities and the counties the same. The effort failed. Our objective in reciting this history is that we don't want the repeat of mishaps to happen in that subdivision at the corner of Sandifer and Danny Carpenter. And it looks like we're on that, what on the road that way because of the commitment to not allow an access onto Sandifer Road, and we have also the concerns. It's our, was our understanding that the county agreed to the annexation or concurred with the annexation, and the city agreed that they would have the zoning not be more, even though it was considered R2, not be more dense than the county's R3 standards, that is our standard. We want to make sure that those two things are still in place. No access on the Sandifer Road, and that the zoning be no more dense than the R1 and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Would something be written down? Would anyone else like to address council? Item 15, the mayor items. And I only have one. Please, please continue to support your mayor and your council, its department heads, staff, and employees. They deserve it. They're giving you much value for your money and for their time. Again, it has indeed been my honor and my pleasure to serve the citizens of Houston County and work for these five men and women. Thank you for your participation and your support. We stand adjourned.